Hi, how's it going buddy? Glad to be here. Number complaint about the... American. Um, we received former request... Thank you. But the matter was already at that time. I just want to make sure that it comes...
So yours here?
Yes.
Beer and you can be taken out of order something about...
Who's here?
Other two are here but he said he need to send their way.
Let me see.
Dave.
Today is Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. We do have five members here at the table. One, two, three, four, five, six. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Reyes.
Present.
Counselor DePena.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Present.
Counselor Abdu.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Maldonado. Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez. Counselor Vice President LaPlante.
Present.
And Counselor President Vasquez.
Present. Please join me for a moment of silence. Now please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselors, can I please get a motion to approve the minutes from July 11th, 2017?
So move.
Taken.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on with public participation, please remember that you will have two and a half minutes to speak. When you hear the first bell, that means that you have two minutes. By the time you hit the second bell, your time is up. When speaking, please address the city council as a whole and not any individual counselor. First person is Mr. H. Molly.
We can't hear you.
I'll repeat myself once again.
Oh no, it's on. It wasn't on.
Okay. We apologize about the inconvenience with the microphones. Once again, public participation is now open. Anyone who wish... No, public participation is now open. We have a list here. Anyone that addresses the city council, please address your... Mention your name and address for the record. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. When you hear the first bell, that means that you have two minutes. By the time you hear the second bell, your time is up. First person is H. Molly.
Good evening, honorable members. In a few days before election 2017, our citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our police officers and the union. Our police officer under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen. We demand of Mayor Rivera sign our police officers contract. Our citizen are forever grateful to Honorable Superintendent Rowley for saving our public school. In the past four years, Mayor Rivera by only offering a budget of $12 million destroy our police department. After Paulino, the Mayor Rivera made our citizen complain repeatedly to Department of Justice, writing complaint and report that has been shameful for Mayor Rivera administration. Under Mayor Rivera, department such as inspection department under supervision, Pat Ruse continuously harassing our homeowner by fining him or dragging them to the court. We the citizen demand of Mayor Rivera immediately fire Pat Ruse. In the last four years, useless organization towards Lawrence community work under supervision of Newbury Street hurt our citizen by doing nothing about the ever expanding opium expanded and drugs in our city. We need to shut down this corrupt and nuisance organization, which is a cancer in our city. We demand of Mayor Rivera in his last hours in this city hall tell the truth to Paulino's parent about how the child died. In the 200 years history of the city, never has been a human being with a chopped up head being fined next to the Mary McRiver and the mayor of the city cover up. We ask Mayor Rivera in the last days in this city hall, sign the contract for our police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Ty Coleman. Name an address for the record, please.
I beg your pardon?
Name an address for the record.
I would rather not give my address. I'll be glad to give it to Teresa afterwards because of everything that's been reported in the Tribune, and I would like to protect my family. And I'm here for that reason, sir. Please have some indulgence. First, I want to say how glad I have been to come back to my birthplace and to be welcomed by your city clerk, his lovely assistant Theresa and counselor to my right, LaPlante. I am here to try to rebuild Lawrence, and I have an offer of help from Andover, from Methuen, from North Andover, especially senior citizens like me who want to mentor your children. And we will not change this country unless we all become friends. And before we leave tonight, I all want each and every one of us to shake hands with one person before Christmas and keep abreast of what they're doing for the next year. We will turn this city around if we make friends, and this is what the United States of America is all about. I am a dreamer. Are you? I want this to be the number one dream city for the nation, and the Boston Globe is supposed to be here tonight and Boston Meteor. And if they don't show up, I will be in Boston, where I just came from on the train, to present my story to them. Forty years ago, I came before this great council to appeal before you about Bellevue Cemetery. My grandmother was Evelyn Dewhurst, and her wonderful brother was Charles Dewhurst, the largest funeral director north of Boston. We are your best customer in Bellevue Cemetery. We treat all the families of great Lawrence with love and dignity. We have not received this from the city of Lawrence in Bellevue Cemetery. It must change. The gentleman that is appointed by the mayor, given a $20,000 raise, is unacceptable. He is not doing the job. The grass is up to here, and not close to six feet tall. We have the first veteran who was named by our former president Abraham Lincoln, who I think was the best president in the world, was Sumner Needham. He was born on Broadway, and he went to Baltimore to fight, to protect our state and our city. He was the first veteran who was killed in the Civil War. This should have major significance. Three years ago, I came back from Washington. I received no help from Ferris. I was able to get four Boy Scout trips to go up with me to mow and weed that entire cemetery, the old and the new. What you see happening there, and a great friend that you'll remember too, was former counselor William Xavier Wall, he came up there to mow the lawn with me too, forty years ago. And what has happened is Bellevue has been forgotten. Now, we have current Laurentians who are being buried there too.
Thank you.
And you have a fiduciary responsibility to protect that cemetery.
Thank you.
That's my first issue, okay?
Thank you. Your time is up.
No, I have more to say, please. I haven't been for forty years.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Could you have some indulgence, please?
Thank you. Your time is up. We appreciate it.
Will you give me some indulgence? I'd like to make an offer to you to help this city.
Counselors, can I please get a motion to recess?
Is that how you're gonna treat a person who wants to help Lawrence?
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Is it properly second? All those in favor please say aye.
Will you give me some more time?
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Will I have some more time? Well, how can Lawrence be helped?
We are currently under recess. Counselors, can I please get a motion to come out of recess?
So move.
Taken.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We continue with public participation. Next person is Dick Russell. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Counsel. His name is Dick Russell, reside at 34 Cross Street, tough act to follow. I hope that you all enjoyed your summer vacation activities. Several issues that warrant your attention. First, north side of Parker Street, as you come out from under the railroad bridge, there is a telephone manhole that has serious pothole issues on both sides of it. It bears investigating by the telephone company and by the city. There's something happening there. Second, the railroad crossing that I've complained about in the past at South Broadway, just north of Hafners, needs to be repaired ASAP. There is a piece of rail, or a portion of a rail, that comes across diagonally across the tracks that is almost at a knife-edge position. My slots block the crossing off if the railroad doesn't want to repair it. Third, I attended the Bread and Roses Festival yesterday. Interesting event to say the least. But don't the organizers get the message that there's no privately owned vehicles to be parked on the common? There were some vehicles, yes, that warranted being parked there, but others appeared to be just too damn lazy to find a legal parking spot. They just parked under trees in the shade. Lastly, is there a noise ordinance on amplified sound during various parades that happen in Lawrence every year? I spent nearly half a century working in high noise environments such as construction, railroad, subway tunnels, and airports, and never had to adore the noise that emanated from some of those car stereo systems. If you do put something, do you do put a noise restriction on these events, make sure you send them a printed warning, because I am pretty certain that most of them are gonna be too deaf to understand a verbal warning. As always, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. I am now submitting these names to the city clerk for the record. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now moving on, we have public hearings. Document 8317, safety issue mitigating intersection at four-way stop sign at the intersection of Ames and Excess Street was placed on the agenda by Counselor Rodriguez. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 83, 2017, notices hereby given. The city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, in council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be amended by adding a new paragraph to the stop sign section of the municipal code. Ames Street, northbound and southbound drivers at Ames Street at Essex, and Essex Street eastbound and westbound drivers at Essex at Ames. To the extent there are any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on August 22nd.
Public hearings now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Counselors, my name is Suzanne McHugh Piscatello. I live at 21 Cypress Street. Well, all my life, except the five years I lived with my mother-in-law after I got married. So Ames and Essex Street is my neighborhood. And I'm afraid... I wrote a letter to the planning department, I think, to ask if they would reconsider putting back the stop sign going west at Essex Street at Ames. Right now, it is dangerous intersection or something. The problem is, when you go north on Ames Street, you have to kind of... You have to creep into the intersection because people speed from... Because Essex Street is one way from Milton to Ames, and people race up the hill. Since it's not a stop sign anymore, they fly through the intersection. And I'm really afraid. I'm afraid for myself, and I'm afraid for even any little kid. They start honking at Cypress Street, my street, and they just proceed at an excessive rate of speed through the intersection at Ames. So I would really like a stop sign at the corner of Essex Street at Ames. There's one going north and south, there's one going west to east. So there's three stop signs, but the fourth and the most dangerous part of the hill doesn't have a stop sign. It merely says dangerous intersection. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person. Name an address for the record, please.
Elizabeth Charlton, 506 Lowell Street, Lawrence, Mass. I live exactly one block down from that intersection of Essex and Ames Street. I have been there, it'll be seventeen years, on Christmas Eve. Before that, I lived on Milton Street. Before that, I was on Block 12 Street, so roughly about thirty years now. That intersection, I don't remember what the configuration of the stop signs was originally. There were problems with it, and there was speeding up the street. But the biggest problem is zoning allowed a very large white fence that blocks people who are coming from the... Up the hill, across over into the Haverhill Street direction, okay? I'm sitting there in a little Saturn, and I've got a fence this tall, and I've got to get my front end out in order to see. And someone's blowing up the hill, doing forty miles an hour in a twenty mile an hour zone. You've got a school down there. I have seen everything. It used to be a chain link fence, so you could see through it, okay? And the thing is, is you could either turn it into a four-way stop sign, but that's gonna be problematic when you come up the hill in the winter, especially if you're driving a standard vehicle, because you've got to now stop on an icy hill, and you're gonna slide. You see what I'm saying? But the thing is, is the obstruction's gotta go, is what it comes down to. You cannot, under any circumstances. I would need a dump truck to be able to see around that fence. My daughter lived right at the house across the street from the fence, on Essex Street, and we've seen cars flipped over, we've seen people getting close to being hit, we've seen cars damaged. I mean, on and on and on. You'll hear it in the middle of the night. You know what I'm saying? Somebody either blows through the stop sign, or they come plowing up the hill, sometimes down the hill. But eventually, somebody's going to die in that intersection, like they did at... Over on Prospect Hill at Ferry Street, Ferry and East Haverhill Street, which was probably about fifteen years ago. They solved that by putting the four-way in. I believe, Mark, you may have been around at that time, I'm not sure. That was a friend of mine, she passed away. She got hit by someone else, and that's essentially what's going to happen. So it would be great if someone could fix the configuration, either put a four-way stop in, or ask the owners to remove their fence. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joseph Bella. I'm at 77 Ford Street, Methuen. And again, that intersection, Essex and Ames, several times I have come close to being hit, or sideswiped. Primarily, the stop signs do work to a certain degree. The fence on one of the corners, I think the southeast corner, since that fence has been installed, that intersection has been more of a danger and a hazard to all traffickers since that white fence. And originally, there was a chain link fence, I remember, and you could see who was coming up from a certain distance. Now, you only have a distance of, I'm guessing, between five and ten feet from the intersection. Again, that's very, very dangerous. And that's all I'll have to say. Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Teresa Jeffrey. I live at 105 Olive Avenue. I drive up Ames Street to that intersection every day on my way home from work, and I just like to reiterate exactly what everyone else has said. When you are traveling north on Ames Street and you arrive at that intersection, it's necessary for you to pull out actually into the intersection in order to look down Essex Street to see if somebody's coming. So in order for you to see if someone's coming, you actually have to be in the line of dangerous travel. And it's just a crazy situation. As other people have said, since the erection of that white fence, it's become an area where you're not safe. Another thing that I don't think other people have thought about, but I noticed it again today, is lane of travel is coming up Essex Street, but the other side of Essex Street, people are coming... It's not a two... It's not a one-way. So people are coming down Essex Street on the other side, and you're in that lane of travel. And I mean, I noticed myself doing it today. I didn't even look at what was coming that way when I was looking at what was coming from the right. So, I mean, it's been suggested that we need a four-way stop there. I totally agree with that. We need some kind of intervention before someone dies. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Counselor. My name is Eileen Burnell. I reside at 257 Mount Vernon Street. I do work in the office of the mayor, but I'm here tonight as a resident and also as a former counselor. I just want to remind the body that this issue did come before us, I want to say about 2012, and we voted against creating the four-way stop, and there's been continuous accidents and problems ever since then. If I could turn back time and vote for this, I would. I just want to encourage you to please consider voting for the four-way stop. I know that there is a hill there, I know that that's an issue, but I don't let that be an excuse to not support the measure. There definitely is a problem with the fence that needs to be addressed and dealt with, but please don't let the issue with the fence be a distraction. I want to really encourage you to consider voting for this four-way stop sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, all those in favor... Public hearings now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve and wait the thirty days.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Counselor Ortiz.
So I'm looking here, and I remember I was... I remember, I guess, watching the meeting where this was discussed on... From home at the time. And I wanted to know if there's... Has there been any communication with the DPW and the police department and the fire department in regards to this item? Have they changed their mind? What is their opinion? Because when we're thinking of safety, I have to defer to the three departments that are in our city and what they think about it, because they are the professionals.
Counselors, does anyone have an answer?
Yeah, he has the copy. We have all the responsible, all the department.
And also through you, Counsel President.
Counselor Rodriguez.
The DPW director just sent an email talking about what the regulations are in terms of a four-way stop sign, in terms of the regulation of that traffic accident happening specifically on that intersection. We have have, according to the police report, about twelve... Eleven accidents, I believe? Let me see. And the last... According to the regulations, federal regulations, if we have more than five accidents in two years, and it is justifiable. The warrants are met. And on that intersection, basically, a lot of people don't report the accident, but we still have, I believe, eleven accidents in the last three years.
So we...
Reported.
Reported.
And not many people report the accidents. And sometime, if the accidents happen, let's say perhaps on Ames, but it was because of the intersection, it's not reported as part of the intersection. It's not in the... It's not in the history of the specific location. So basically, that's one of the issue as well, in terms of the crash accidents we have in the city. But looking at the report he sent to me, I can pass it over to you, it's recommended back then, six years ago, the recommendation was denied... I mean, the stop sign was denied based on the standards at the moment in terms of cleaning that intersection. It is dips... It is very steep. It is about four, five percent the slope going up, but according to the regulations and the standard that we have cleaning up the road now, it's different than what it was six years ago. Now we have... We understand that the use of salt, it is... It have to happen on hills, not just plowing. And that was one of the issue before. We were more concerned about the safety. We were concerned about the operation of the DPW and not necessarily the safety of the people. And that's basically what we addressing today, putting the safety first, not necessarily what it... But what need to happen, because I mean, that's an excuse back then, six years ago. And I hope that you guys consider voting for... Counselors, consider voting for this in favor of this, because I just report three videos of this intersection, three different accidents happening in the last few months. And if we don't do something today, something bad can happen tomorrow, and we don't want anybody want that.
So in turn, what you're saying is the concerns that the police department, DPW and fire department had back then have been mitigated?
Yes. Most of the concern was the police department referred to the DPW.
Okay.
In terms of the operation of cleaning the intersection, because it was too difficult to get... To go up. And the DPW just sent a memo saying, yes, it is acceptable. So the standard changed in terms of cleaning the road now compared to what it was before.
Thank you, Counselor.
No problem.
Thank you. Counselor LaPlante?
Sure. Mr. President, would the previous speaker read again the accidents per year?
According to the SCALON, we have...
I see what the... Through you, I see what the police department's...
And according to...
They update information from the DPW director?
Yes. I can actually... Would like to forward it to you, but you won't be able to see it. But I mean, you can see it now, on my phone.
Can you read it? You can just read it, can you?
It's a... It's kind of like a long email, but I mean, it's at the end on the last paragraph, you can see what is that about.
Really should get an apple, by the way. I'm not seeing the numbers of accidents on here.
On the SCALON report, it's the number of accidents.
I see, through you. I see that on the SCALON has the accident numbers.
And then on there, it says the statement of what the MUDCCD says according to the federal regulations. So on the... And it's five in the last twelve... Twenty-four month.
But I thought that the previous speaker said there was two or three accidents already this year.
Oh, yes.
SCALON has 2017-0.
I have videos of those accidents, actually.
So what we're... What I'm hearing then, are there either A, unreported accidents going on there, or this information was done prior to those accidents taking place?
Probably. Did... I have two of the accidents happening on July, I think it was. But I mean, I have it on videos. And if you go to my Facebook, you will see it, but I have it on my phone, I can show it to you as well. So we have total report... Not probably between reporting and non-reporting accident, but eleven accidents.
Let me just say that I am very familiar with this area. Before the previous speaker was Tower Hill Counsel, I had the pleasure of being the Counsel there, and I will tell you that that intersection is brutal.
It is.
I don't understand how that fence ever got there. It made matters, and everybody who spoke knows about it. It made it completely worse. I don't know how they got to that point. And I do see what the police department says, but the... But the police department's recommendation is based on public safety on plows and the snow. And what I'm hearing from the current city council from Tower Hill is that the DPW director is saying that that's not a concern, that...
It is not.
That... That... That he still isn't... He's in favor of it. Is that the understanding?
Correct.
So I think that the letter that we received from the police department is outdated, because that information is new information, and if the police department had a chance to review or resubmit it, they would have to take that in consideration.
Correct.
For that reason, and the fact that it hasn't been working, let's face it, it hasn't been working now for a number of years. I say, what the mayor used to always say when he was on the council, let's give it a shot. Let's give it a year. Let's put the four... Four stops there.
Four stops.
And see what happens, and if it works, fantastic. If it doesn't work, let's go back to the drawing board and see what else there is. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now moving on with document... Now moving on with document 22917. It's a handicap parking at 255 Prospect Street, Bass... It's a handicap parking at 255 Prospect Street, Basilia, Basilisa Rodriguez. Mister Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 229-2017 notices hereby given the City Council will hold a public hearing Tuesday, September 5th in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to be amended by adding a new paragraph to the handicap parking ordinance to be inserted in proper order regarding Prospect Streets South Side from a point forty-five feet easterly of the intersection of Prospect Court to a point sixty-five feet easterly of the intersection of Prospect Court. To the extent there exists any ordinance to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity published on August 22nd.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 237-17. Stop sign at the intersection of South Union and South Broadway to be removed. Placed on the agenda by Council Vice President LaPlante. Mister Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 237 of 2017. Notices hereby given the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 5th, 2017 in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances the city warrants to be further amended by deleting the following paragraph from the stopping, stop sign section of the municipal code at South Union Street, northbound drivers on South Union Street at South Broadway. To the extent there exist any ordinances to the contrary, they hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on August 22nd.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made and properly second. Discussion, Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
In my, in my motion, I also like to, to instruct or to request the Police Department to put a cautionary sign, a yield or some sort of sign there where the stop sign currently exists so that people won't still race around there and still have a chance to slow down as they're going through there. So that's my request.
Okay. Counselor Abdu?
I would suggest that this present stop sign is more of a danger than it is a safety implementation, a safety tool. It is one way of traffic at that point heading south. And so where you are at that stop sign, you can only go in one direction. The way it's set up, you can only go north. And what you do is you end up stopping there. It's a bit of a blind corner coming off of South Union Street. And so I commend Counsel LaPlante for this, this action. And I wholeheartedly support the withdrawal of the stop sign. I believe it'd be a safety issue.
Counsel Ortiz.
So just like the previous speaker said, I guess my concern on the other side is that when we drive up that way, the stop sign actually stops people from kind of speeding around the corner. And I was noticing there that there's crosswalks. And what I wouldn't want to happen is for someone to be coming around like that blind corner and hit somebody crossing the street. Or in turn, just taking too much speed in, in the first place. I guess for clarification, I agree that I guess a compromise to, to my apprehension is a yield sign. But do we, what is the process for that? Is, do, can we put one in place or is that required to have an agenda item and say, we want a yield sign at this space? Because we had to request a stop sign, now we have to request a yield sign. So what is that process?
Counsel Vice President.
Yeah, I'm looking for any clarification.
There is no requirement for City Council approval on the yield sign. That's, it's a, it's a warning. It's a, it's a cautionary situation. So only stop signs and stopping traffic signals require ordinances of the slow signs, children's signs, yield signs. Those are all things that do not need Council approval. Those are things that are put up by the DPW with their own expertise. And I'm sure they consult the Police Department too. I don't think they do it on their own.
And so is that a formal request that we make with the motion? That's what happens?
I, well, we can.
Which they swap out? Meaning as they take down the stop sign, they're putting up the yield sign so that there's not, that there's not a lag in time of signage being at that, at area?
That's my request. I, we don't need to do it by the full Council. I can certainly have contacted the DPW tomorrow if we didn't have this, say, hey, can you just put a stop sign, I mean, a yield sign over there? And they say, yeah, that makes sense. Or, well, we're the Counselor, that doesn't really make a lot of sense. I would suspect they would say, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, we'll put one in there. We don't need to have this discussion. But I think because of the concerns that you and others may have, that's why at this level, I thought it might be a good thing just to throw that out there and, and make a formal request for it. That's all.
Thank you.
Through you, Counselors.
Counselor Rodriguez.
So that, Counsel, Counsel LaPlante, this, this is like probably a question to you. There is a current four-way stop sign on the location, right? It's only one, two ways to stop sign.
No, it's one stop sign. So.
It's a one-way street? Both streets are going one way and they merge into one?
No.
No.
Okay.
Can I, can I just give clarification or maybe a, a visual? So Counsel Rodriguez, do you know when you go up South Union and J. Bryan's? Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes, sure.
Pay attention.
Do you know? Stop it. Do you know when you go up South Union, when you pass?
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Up there. So when you pass before you're able, you can either go to the left and go straight on to, well, that's even a hard way to get on the highway, but you get on 28. Or you can loop around right after J. Bryan's, you take that kind of like that sharper right that leads you back going down South Broadway. When you take that hook, there's like a little island there. That's where the stop sign is so that people don't just burn around the corner.
The highway is right there, right? Look.
Okay. Counselors, any further questions or comments? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on, this document, 247-17. Handicap parking, 26th Hillside Avenue. Mister Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 247-2017 notices hereby given the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 5th, 2017 in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the ordinances for the city warrants to be amended by adding a new paragraph to the handicap parking section to be inserted in proper order. Hillside Ave, West Side, from a point four hundred twenty-five feet northerly of the intersection of Havil Street to a point of four hundred forty-five feet northerly of the intersection of Havil Street. To the extent there exist any ordinances to the contrary, they are repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on August 22nd.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Counsel Ortiz.
And it's just to double check and that's for all, everything is in order? We have everything that we need for all these items that are coming up? Okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
Seeing there's no further questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 253-17. Handicap parking at 12 Winslow Place. Mister Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 253 of 2017. Notices hereby given the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 5th in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances by adding a new section to the handicap parking section of the code. At Winslow Place, West Side, from a point one hundred forty-five feet west, westally, I'm sorry, feet southerly of the intersection of Bradford Street to a point one hundred and sixty-five feet southerly of the intersection of Bradford Street. To the extent there exist ordinances to the contrary, they are repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on August 22nd.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that wants, that wishes to be heard?
Good evening. Me. I am Dulce Vega. I am living in the 12 Winslow Place in Lawrence. I'm be here because I try to get a handicap because I'm really sick and sometimes I can't even walk. And that's what I'm here for.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Counselors, is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve and wait the thirty days.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 258-17. Handicap parking at 181 Water Street. Mister Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 258-2017 notices hereby given the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 5th, 2017 at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of the hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to be amended by adding a new section to the handicap parking section of the code. Vocating a handicap parking space at Water Street North Side from a point fifty-five feet westally of the intersection of Hazel Place to a point seventy-five feet westally of the intersection of Hazel Place. To the extent there exist ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only as published on August 22nd.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve and wait the thirty days.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is document 271-17. Handicap parking at 296 Lowell Street. Mister Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 271 of seven, 2017. Notices hereby given the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 5th, 2017 in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to be amended by adding the following new paragraph to the handicap parking section of the municipal code at Lowell Street North Side from a point of the intersection of Winter Street to a point twenty feet westally of the intersection of Winter Street. To the extent there exist any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only as published August 22nd.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Name an address for the record, please.
I'm Lolita Wiggle. I live at 296 Lowell Street. When I originally put in the request, I asked for Winter Street. Is that what it said? Because I couldn't really understand where, but that's the original question was to put it next to my driveway on Winter Street.
The public hearing reads to put it.
Corner of Lowell Street and Winter Street.
At the corner, yes.
On Lowell Street or on Winter Street?
So it says, according to the police report, the handicap sign should be placed at the following location, from the northwest corner of Lowell Street and Winter Street to a point twenty feet from the northwest corner of Lowell Street and Winter Street to a point of forty feet. This place, this place is a handicap parking in front of 296 Lowell Street.
So it'll be right in front of my house?
Right in front of your house.
Okay, that's, that's fine. That's great.
Yes.
Yeah, because that, that would be better than on Winter Street. Except on Winter Street, it'd be nice so I could get out of my driveway easier. But right now, I need it in front of my house, on, on, right, directly in front of my house, on Lowell Street. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in, from the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, motion has been made. Discussion, Counsel Rodriguez.
I would like to ask a question to the petitioner, if possible.
Okay. Is Wiggle?
Yes.
Uh, when you, when you came to the ordinance committee, we actually made the request to have the handicap parking on, on Winter Street. I don't know if the, if the information get to the Police Department in the way that it was supposed to. Do you prefer this handicap to be on Lowell Street or Winter Street? Because I mean, it can be, it can be fixed.
Right now, my husband has had a major medical issue, so walking is really hard. It's easier to get him out the front door where there's three steps versus seven steps in the back of the house. So right now, I need it on Lowell Street.
All right. Okay, so.
If you'd like to approve one on Winter Street, that would be wonderful because of all the businesses I have parked. When I try to get out of my driveway, I can't see. There's cars parked here, there's cars parked across the street, there's cars going both directions.
We, currently, we have it, we have it on Lowell Street. So do you, if we, if we have a new item on the agenda to replace it, to remove and replace, is that doable, Clerk? Eventually, as a new item?
It will add to the process.
No, eventually, we have this one on place, perhaps. And then we put a new item on the agenda to install one, a new one on, on Winter and as well as removing the other one that we just approved.
No, it's a delete, it's a delete and then a new parking space or keep both.
Or keep both.
Right, you gotta delete one, if you're gonna move it, you delete one, add another, the new one or the, at Winter Street.
And then essentially, they're gonna have it on Winter Street.
Or keep both.
So it's do, it's doable?
Yeah, in, in, in the long, yeah, in the long way around, sure.
Okay, so down the road, I could come back and ask for it to be moved from Lowell Street to Winter Street.
Yeah, that's, that's, yes.
Okay.
We will have to wait one year. There's a one-year period.
Yes.
To delete it?
At a new place.
Uh, yeah, to add a new place.
That's, that's fine. But having one directly in front of my house on Lowell Street, right now.
The need that you have with one.
Yes.
Sign.
That would be.
No need for a second sign at this point.
Right.
Okay. Counselors, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, next document is document 272-17. Handicap parking, 24 Sterns Ave at the corner of Mayflower Street. Mister Clerk, please read the longer.
Document 272-2017 notices hereby given. The City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 5th in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendment to the revised ordinances by adding a new paragraph to the handicap parking section concerning Sterns Ave, South Side from a point twenty feet easterly of the intersection of Mayflower Street to a point forty feet of the, and westally of the intersection of Mayflower Street. To the extent there exist any ordinances to the contrary, they are repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Counselors. My name is Albert Savastano. I live at 4 Maple Street. This is from my father's house.
Okay.
We had requested that this be put on Mayflower Street, and there's two reasons for that. The first one is Sterns Avenue isn't thirty feet wide, so there's no odd even parking in the wintertime. And it'd just make too much of a congestion out there. The section of Mayflower Street we're asking for it to be on is a dead end. And both properties that are but Mayflower Street have garages and have private parking. So basically, we're trying to make the house handicap accessible. And all the improvements we're doing through the V.A. are on the Mayflower Street side. So if we could get this approved for the Mayflower Street side, that would be wonderful.
Is there anyone else from the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, before, there's a motion on the floor. Please note that this, based on the suggestion by Officer Scanlon, this places a handicap parking in front of 24 Sterns Ave, which is not what has been requested by the petitioner. Will you work, to you, Mister Savastano? Will you work in front of 24 Sterns Ave at this point?
No, we'll not.
You will not?
We have a, we have a single-stage elevator going in and everything because its chailift is on the Mayflower Street side.
Um, Counselors, we will have to send this back to Officer Scanlon to do proper measurements to make sure that we put it on Mayflower Street, which is where the petitioner would like the sign to go up.
I'd like to make a motion to send it to Officer Scanlon and request the stop sign to be placed on Mayflower Street.
Second.
Motion has been made. Properly second.
Discussion. He said stop sign, and it needs to be a handicap.
Handicaps.
Handicaps, sorry.
Yeah, handicap sign. So just amend, amend that motion.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Sure.
Based on the advice by Officer, by, um, our city clerk, will you be able to amend your motion to approve pending the report from Officer Scanlon to place the handicap sign at the appropriate location?
Yes, no problem. I'll take the amendment.
Okay, so there's no thirty-day waiver at this point here, right?
Right.
Okay, so...
No, during the thirty days, we're gonna be doing the recommendation.
Yeah, so the motion on the floor is to approve, um, the handicap sign pending the appropriate location by Officer Scanlon.
Mr. President.
Counselor Abdi.
I have a question for the applicant.
Yes.
For you, Mr. President. Mr. Salvastano, had your request originally been Mayflower Street?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
So if I could, Mr. President, how, how does it go from one request to what we have in front of us? Because now, an elderly gentleman, assuming he's elderly, the Salvastanos from his thirties...
Oh, he was the water commissioner half, uh, twenty-plus years.
He's, he's going to wait a few more weeks, and I'm just curious as to how we got on a different street. So now it's process holding this up.
Yeah, the, the request was made by the petitioner.
Mayflower Street, there's no traffic on it, because it, it runs from Sterns Avenue to in front of our garage, and it's blocked off by the Lawrence Home for the Age at the woods that are behind that. So nobody travels up and down Mayflower Street on that section. So it really would be the least amount of impact to any resident in the city to put it on that street.
Okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll wait from, um, we'll wait to hear from Mr., from Officer Scanlon in regards to his suggestion, but the request was made for Mayflower Street. This, it, this process shouldn't delay, uh, the placement of the sign, because there's a thirty-day period after the approval of the document. So even if we were to approve it today, uh, if it had been properly signaled as to where the location will be, um, we will still have to wait thirty days, because it hasn't been waived.
Correct.
So we, we're gonna be able to take advantage of that time period to ensure that we get the appropriate information from the officer.
Okay.
So within thirty days, uh, the sign should be up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, if it gets approved tonight. Uh, counselors?
Second.
It's been second by Councilor Reyes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now moving on, document two ninety-four seventeen. It's a temporary construction easement, Marston Street corridor improvement, and signal light at the intersection at Ferry Street and Commonwealth Avenue. Was placed on the agenda by our land use planner, Dan McCarthy. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Notice, uh, document two ninety-four of seventeen, notices hereby given the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand seventeen, at seven P. M. in Council chambers. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a petition by the Planning Department for the city of Lawrence presented for consideration of acceptance by the Lawrence City Council on behalf of the city of Lawrence of nine temporary construction easements that are proposed pursuant to the general laws of Commonwealth, Massachusetts, to be referenced, as referenced in the scheduled easements provided in the advertisement, easements to be located at the following address: One thirty Marston Street, Marston and Ferry Streets, one thirty-two to one thirty-four Marston Street, one thirty-six Marston Street, one thirty-eight Marston Street, one forty Marston Street, one forty-two Marston Street, one forty-four Marston Street, one fifty-four to one fifty-six Marston Street. The purpose of the proposed easements is for the construction and maintenance and improvements of certain ways on the ci, of the city of Lawrence, including driveway and slope modifications, slight grade, site-grade roadway improvements, handicap accessibility, sidewalks, and crosswalks along Marston Street, and at the intersection of Marston Street, Commonwealth Drive, and Ferry Street, for the Mass. Department of Transportation Improvement Program. Copy of the proposed easements, easements in the plan presented for consideration of Lawrence City Council was available for viewing and examination and copying at the request of the Office of Planning Department for the city of Lawrence located at two twenty-five Essex Street on the third floor between eight thirty A. M. and four thirty P. M. on any business day. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published on August twenty-second.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second.
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilor T.
Um, if Mr. McCarthy could come up here, please. Councilor President, and waive the thirty days.
Good evening, Council Daniel McCarthy, city land use planner.
Thank you so much. Um, I know that last we met, we were at a space where, um, we were clear that all the, the, um, butters of these easements were okay with what we were doing, because they're temporary, and that there was clear communication on this. I, I do have one question on where we are with the planning, so if we can, is there an update since the last time that we talked? I know that we were at seventy-five percent, or what you thought to be seventy-five percent. So if you have any new information to add, and, um, just to, to, uh, give us an update on this project?
Um, after the last meeting, I did request the, uh, the newest updated plans, and there is to be a scheduled meeting for the contract coming up soon, but they were not able to get me plans before this meeting. Um, part of the, part of the reason I, I requested an expedited public hearing on this matter is because we're trying to get it onto the public register by this weekend.
Okay.
It's a, it was a, it's a, it's a scheduled publication notice date that the state requires. So that's why we're ahead of the curve, but the idea is that the, the hundred percent plans should be done within a week or two, so that they can go for posted, because we're gonna, within, within the next month, this met, this, this, uh, contract will be bid on, and we need the full plans for then. So I asked the engineering company, which is a Lawrence company, T. S. Engineering, Engineering, to provide me copies of the plans as soon as they're available, and I will make them available to the members of this council.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, counselors, any further discussions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Councilor President.
Uh, Councilor Reyes?
I would like to take a couple of items out of order from the ordinance committee, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the first item is document two eighty-two seventeen, um, motion to take at, um, two eighty-two, out of order, and, uh, out of committee.
It's a motion to take document two eighty-two, out of order and out of committee?
Second.
So simply out of order, not out of committee?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it.
Document two eighty-two seventeen is a Lawrence Civil War Memorial Guard request to use the Campanon Common for their fifteen annual Civil War weekends from Friday, September fifteen, September sixteen, and September seventeen, from nine A. M. to nine P. M. All the documents were in order. Come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion to approve.
Motion has been made and properly second. Discussion, discussion, Council Vice President Laplan.
Sure. Are, are the proponents here this evening?
They should be here.
Ms. Charlton?
Yes.
Mr. Bella, right?
Are the petitioners here today?
Yes, they are here.
We can't hear right there.
Just a, a reminder, for anyone that has, um, difficulty with hearing, we do have some hearing devices available, uh, here in the city council chamber. Uh, I'm not saying anyone in this room needs it today, but if anyone ever needs it, we do have them available.
Good evening, and thank you for coming. Very simply, we just had some events this past weekend, and I know that the, the council frowns upon having cars on this, in the, in the, uh, Campanone Common, and I just need to ask, I doubt that you guys are going to have any vehicles on there. You're mostly tents and horses and hay and things of that nature, but...
Civil War.
Civil War, that's right. But I just need to double-check. I mean, uh, if I didn't ask the question to you guys, it wouldn't be fair. I should ask it of the other folks as well. So we'd be putting cars or any automobiles onto the common during your, during the, the time that you're there?
Just to unload, you know, they have, we have cannons, we have tents, firewood, you know?
Yeah.
Things like that. And we'll get, we'll get the word out, and we'll, we'll make sure everybody's off the common.
I appreciate that. It, I wish more groups would do that. Oftentimes, they just stay on the common, they stay on the grass. Uh, they don't, they don't just unload, they just leave the stuff on there, or they drive around, and, um, it doesn't, um, we put a lot of money in that common. I'm not looking at you, because I think you guys are okay, but we put a lot of money in that common. The tax rates put a lot of money in that common to make sure that it looks good, and yet we, you know, we oftentimes, uh, we see big machines that are on there tearing that thing up, and, and you're probably the least of that, because you're, you're, you're harkening back to eighteen sixty-three. And there weren't many cars back then, as I recall. Not that I was there at the time, Mr. Clerk, but, but I've read some books about this. And so, um... But my sense is that, uh, if, if we could start leading by example on some of these, maybe some of the other groups will see that you don't need to be parking there the entire time and just, just be very careless about that. And so I just ask that, and I think you're going to, but I just ask to remind you that you would do that on the, on our common.
Sure.
Our Campanone Common. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We use the, we use the, um, hall parking Saturday and Sunday.
Excuse me?
The city hall parking lot, we...
Excellent, so park on the pavement, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Um, Councilor, I, I'll say, I would like to take, uh, document two ninety, two ninety, two ninety-one, and two ninety-two as a block.
Motion has been...
In as, out of, out of...
Motion has been made and properly second. Uh, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Madam Chair from the ordinance committee.
Okay, document two ninety is a disclosure of conflict from, um, for Michael Phillips. And, um, document two ninety-one is also a disclosure of conflict for Johnny Paredes. And document two ninety-three also a disclosure of conflict. The three individuals, they work for the school, they also work for the auxiliary police, they're gonna become an special auxiliary, which is mean like they're gonna be able to work detail and get pay. So that's the disclosure of the conflict. It come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Has been properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor President and counselors.
Any other documents?
Yes, um, the last one is document two eighty-six seventeen.
Document two eighty-six seventeen?
Second.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor, it's been properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it.
Two eighty-six is a lock of ocean prohibiting recreational marijuana. It come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing pending, um, Councilor Maldonado, right? Pending the draft from the city attorney, but we, uh, it come out to order a public hearing pending the documentation.
Okay, is it documentation?
No, we don't have it, um...
Okay, so, um, what would the council like to do?
Can we order the public hearing?
So, uh, motion to order a public hearing has been made.
I'm sorry, what is, the motion is...
To order a public hearing?
To order a public hearing.
Okay, so motion has been made, it's been properly second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay. Going back to the top of the agenda, document three oh seven seventeen is the Office of Planning and Development, Green Communities Designation and Grant Program Information of Teresa Park, Office of Planning and Development. Um, Director Park, uh, sent me an email that she was not gonna be able to be present today. Is there anyone for her, from her office? Uh, can I please get a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second.
Uh, Mr. President, can we also send communication to, uh, Mrs. Parks to come at the next meeting, so she can explain?
Yeah.
This document?
Um, in her email, she says that she will be here in, in our next October meeting. Yeah, she will be available for the next meeting. Okay, so the motion to table has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. I apologize, I was just looking for the email very quick here. Next document is document three eleven seventeen. It is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document three twelve seventeen, grant authorization from, for M. S. B. A. accelerator repair projects roof at northern, North Common Educational Complex for the four-point-five-million-dollar boiler at the Arlington School, one-point-five million, and roof at the Arlington School, two-point-three million. It's also going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document two seventy seventeen, Lawrence Police Department, Mr. Chair and Vice President of Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you. The Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to send this document up to the full council with a favorable recommendation. This is to an accepted grant of six-hundred thousand dollars, uh, for the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative Grant, uh, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion?
One quick thing, this is gonna be spread over two years, and I think that's a little different than we've had in the past, so, uh, we're gonna see a, a, two different awards of this particular, uh, monies over the course of two years. Just wanted to make sure we're all aware.
Any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Document two ninety-five seventeen, Mr. Chair and Vice President Laplan.
The Budget and Finance Committee met unanimously, sent it up to the full council with favorable recommendation, this document, which is the acceptance of a grant for thirty-five-thousand dollars. Um, I can't ever say this word correctly, a naloxone grant, otherwise known as Narcan. Um, this is to be used by the Lawrence Police Department, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Discussion. Discussion, Council Vice President Laplan.
So, uh, Council President, I mean, we're all talking to neighbors, every one of us around this table is meeting neighbors, talking to neighbors, and I'm sure when we meet folks, one of the things that we hear almost every day that we're talking to folks is how bad the drug situation is in our city. The opioid crisis is a crisis. We've heard some good news from the state level that some of those numbers are down, but still in Lawrence, we still have problems. We still, Lawrence, we're a community that still is on the supply side. We also have individuals who come here on the, uh, on the recipient's side of the, of opioids, whether it's fentanyl or heroin, um, and it's still a problem in our city, and we have some stats, uh, that can bear that, those, uh, those statements out. Uh, but I, I think it's important, and I typically don't do this. When we work in the Budget and Finance Committee, we make the recommendations, we send these things on up, and of course, if we have a comment or two, we have people here, but this is such an important issue in our city. The opioid situation is so critical that I think that despite the fact that it happened, and we had a, a very robust conversation in the Budget and Finance, I still think we should engage a little bit tonight, because I think the people that may be, uh, listening to our discussions this evening, uh, could benefit from the fact that we are serious about trying to deal with this issue, and granted that this is only one piece of that puzzle, uh, we should discuss this piece. Uh, it, it's not without a little bit of controversy, of course, but I think that we should at least bring this up. So, uh, if, if there's no objection, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Burke to come up, uh, just to talk a little bit about the grant proposal, um, and then, um, he did a very good presentation at the Budget Committee, and maybe he can just give a synopsis of that to, to the full council. And also, we have a representative here from the L. M. C. C., who is one of the vendors from our city, who is doing a tremendous amount of background research on this, and if I could bring her up after Lieutenant Burke, just to give some background, that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Lieutenant Sean Burke. I'm lieutenant with the Lawrence Police Department. I am the executive officer in the administrative division. Uh, as part of that, my duties, uh, include, um, writing, securing, managing grants. Um, as part of this, this is the second year that I've been in front of you, asking you to accept this. Um, and I, I know, especially with the discussion that we had in front of committee, um, things that I have heard, questions that I've had since then, I, I just want to make this clear, the vote is to accept thirty-five-thousand-dollar grant from Mass. Department of Health. Um, I, I fully realize and recognize, both as a police officer and personally... I, I fully realize and recognize both as a police officer and personally that there are, there are many feelings, many facets of, uh, the opioid problem. The way I'd like to describe this is, this is purely a life-saving grant. This is one tool that the Lawrence Police Department will use to save lives. Um, I went over, I don't know how in-depth you want me to get, but I went over on how we spent the thirty-five thousand dollars, um, last year. And that includes training, uh, purchase of protective equipment as well as medical equipment, um, and training the offices and supplying them with Narcan. I also gave the, the number that from, um, June first, I mean, sorry, June first seventeen to when I presented on eight twenty-three seventeen, we had used it eleven times. We had, we had deployed Narcan, uh, in a medical emergency eleven times. Since eight twenty-three, um, to today's date, we have also deployed it six more times during a, a medical emergency. So from June first two thousand seventeen to today's date, we have used it seventeen times.
Councilors, any further questions or comments?
Fine. Thank you very much. If there's no questions, could we ask? Thank you very much, Lieutenant Burke.
No questions. Councilor Rodriguez.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll really push the floor.
So last year, we received this grant. In terms of the Narcan, the actual device, how mu- how many of those we acquired with those thirty-five thousand last year?
Um, we have, we have acquired, um, if I am, if I have, uh, my memory right, I think it's in the area of eighty or ninety doses. Uh, and they come in, they come in two packs, so eighty or ninety two packs. We had sixty-six offices, um, who, who were trained. They were all issued two packs of Narcan and basically it is a two pack of, uh, the nasal Narcan. I'll show you. We also bought them, these, these placed within the police department, um, and we do have them in reserve. So as soon as the officer uses them, completes the, uh, mandatory paperwork, they are reissued this. So this is what they are issued, the two pack of these.
So let me ask you a question. Uh, how many other cities and towns around here have this, this, uh, program in place?
Um, Andover, North Andover, Methuen, all have it and they pay for it out of their budget. We are the only area department that receives it as a grant, as far as I know.
How many, do you know how many we have used so far?
Excuse me?
Uh, do, do you know how many you, we have used, the police department have used so far in terms of?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
We, um, the way, the way I described it is, last year was the first year we received the grant. It is a different grant. It comes from Department of Health. Um, so they have a lot of different requirements that we're not used to because most of our grants come from public safety agencies through the state. Um, so as part of that grant, uh, we had to, we had to secure, uh, a, a medical partner, which is the Lawrence General. We had to apply as a dispensary for a controlled substance through the state. So there were many steps coming up to it. So as of, uh, the end, of the end of May, beginning of June is when we finally trained our, uh, first batch of offices. Our first training, um, was May ninth seventeen and then s- on June twenty-second seventeen, we had our second batch of offices trained, the total of sixty-six.
Uh, how many other organizations are using Narcan in Lawrence, do you know?
Um, I, I know the, uh, Lawrence General paramedics and, um, ambulances use it. I know there are also social agencies, um, that give it away to, uh, to, um, people with drug problems, homeless. Um, and I, I think our, our partner can speak more to that on that effort, but as far as official, uh, city agencies, we are the only one.
So the, the hospitals gi- is giving Narcan to, to people that have problems with, uh, addiction? Probably.
The, um, a- as far as what is given out, we have, we have nothing to do with that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just going from.
No, I mean, I know.
Being part of this, um, my, my basis of knowledge, I can really speak intelligently to, is just what the police department does.
Is this program, uh, tend to, uh, attract drug addicts to come to Lawrence?
No.
That's the perception people have in the streets?
The, um, it, it is not a hard substance for, for someone with a drug problem to get. Believe me, a, a person who is using an opioid, most popular one being heroin, does not wanna have to use this because this automatically and immediately takes away their high. So the, this is not an attraction that we have this. Many civilians have it. Uh, if you have a drug problem, it's not difficult to get. So we're not attracting people by having it. The only thing is, it's just another tool to save a life, or at least keep them alive until someone with a, a higher level of training gets there.
Are we expecting to train the rest of the police department or is there secondary training that we're gonna have with those, with the new thirty-five thousand dollars that we've received?
With the new year, we were, we were looking to train, uh, as many of the rest of the police department, uh, as possible. So hopefully the rest of them with that money, um, considering how much we will have, uh, with the Narcan that we have. But we should be able to train the rest of the offices with that, the remaining eighty or so.
In terms of train, in terms of, uh, treatment, do you, um, have any information in terms of treatment? Like what the police is doing in combination with this program or we don't have anything like that?
We, we do not offer, offer treatment, um, as part of this grant. Um, and as I said, the first year, um, we weren't able to do it because of the steps that we had to take to be even certified, to give this out and to train our offices. Uh, but as part of this year, there is a mo- uh, an amount of money allotted for education. So we will be doing preventative measures, but as far as treatment, this is, this is, uh, this is basic.
What I, the reason that I'm asking is because I know that the police department won't be able to provide tr- the treatment. But at least if we have somebody that is in need of Narcan, something else gotta happen, um, in terms of offering the treatment. And if you guys are trying to do the, the Narcan, therefore, it should be somehow a way to communicate with a person once he come back and offer a treatment and not just keep on using the Narcan to, because it can become a habit.
The, um, once we use it, we can't force them, but they are highly encouraged to go to the hospital. When we offer, as soon as we, we issue that or before we issue it, we're usually calling for an ambulance also. Um, so at that facility, it's usually where they'll see a mental health worker and, and offer the services. Um, with that education part, we're hoping to, uh, develop a flyer with a list of resources with our partners. So if we do use Narcan, if we do have a family that comes to bail out someone at the police station with, uh, that has a child or a family member with opioid problem, or even the person that gets arrested with the opioid problem, like the sweeps we do with the heroin, we could give them that. Now, we can't force them to call and probably very few will, the actual users. But at least we're giving them information of these are local programs that can help you. So if they do, if they've reached that point where they say, "I need help," they'll have someone to call.
If we use Narcan, they won't call. You know what that means?
Well.
If we done, and then a lot of people will call. Are you gonna, uh, close my statement with that?
The, the bad problem with that is we don't use Narcan. You're right, they won't call because they could be dead.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilors, any further questions or comments? Seeing there's none.
Uh, can I ask Lieutenant, uh, Deanna Cruz? Thank you very much, Council President. If it's all right, Deanna Cruz, would you come forward, please? And Deanna Cruz is with the LMCC. And she, uh, is, is really leading on the front on the research side of this and has some statistics that I think, uh, are useful as we become more educated on the impacts in our city. And I would invite, um, Ms. Cruz to kinda give us an overview so far. Thank you.
Greetings, Councilors. My name is Deanna Cruz, Director of Substance Abuse Prevention and Education at Lawrence Methuen Community Council. And the handout that you will have momentarily is, um, uh, brief data facts from data that was collected on two thousand sixteen opioid overdose deaths in Lawrence specifically. And ironically, when we met with the, uh, subcommittee two weeks ago, was the day after that Massachusetts released its DPH data on opioid overdose deaths for the state. So that particular week, we heard some exciting news that there was a decline in opioid-related deaths for two thousand sixteen, which we did see in the statewide data, which was very exciting. However, what we see in the data that we personally collected at LMCC is that that trend is not being observed here in Lawrence. The numbers are increasing in Lawrence. So if you look at the, the front page, which is titled, "Two Thousand Sixteen Lawrence Overdose Profile", in two thousand sixteen, there were sixty-five overdose deaths related to Lawrence, which were specific to opioids. Forty-five Lorenzians, twenty non-Lorenzians, meaning people who died in Lawrence. Fifteen died at Lawrence General Hospital, five died somewhere in the Lawrence community. The interesting thing with all of this data is looking at, um, the trend as it has evolved in the individuals who are dying most frequently from overdose deaths here in our community. And it's not the demographic that it has typically been, not just here in Lawrence, but, um, ne- statewide and nationally as well. So if you look at this, um, printout for the Lawrence-related deaths, the new demographic that the opioid overdose deaths is targeting are men in their forties who are white and employed. Pretty startling, isn't it? That is not the demographic that we typically expect. Now, this tells us something else that's very important to consider. All the outreach efforts in the community are working. All of the things that the groups that are doing outreach, Great Lawrence Family Health Center, all of the other, um, nonprofits that are out there, the churches, the community groups, the work is helping. And we are targeting that demographic that is usually suspect for overdose deaths. The young men who are unemployed and typically homeless and disenfranchised. So we're getting that group and what we're seeing now is the shift to another group. So we need to target this other group as well. Couple of other important things to note that are specific here to Lawrence. Fentanyl was involved in fifty-eight deaths. So that means on the death certificates of fifty-eight people, fentanyl was specifically mentioned. That's ninety percent. Fentanyl alone caused fifteen deaths. And most of these deaths were attributed to acute intoxication. That means somebody just got too high. They didn't intend, it wasn't a chronic illness or chronic abuse that killed them. Now, if you look on the other side, I broke down the demographics of the individuals who lived in Lawrence versus those who did not live in Lawrence. And there's a little bit of a distinction there. Uh, the demographics change a little bit. We still see the average age being in the forties. Um, the majority of people are employed and they are male. However, uh, racial ethnicity, uh, changes a little bit in that Hispanics rise to fifty-five percent and white, um, declines to forty percent. But still considering the, um, racial breakdown here in Lawrence, that's still disproportionate to, um, what it is in Lawrence in general. So interesting things to consider. And we see for those who are non-Lorenzians coming from out of town and ending up here in Lawrence, um, an important thing to notice is seventy-five percent of non-Lorenzians who die in Lawrence from an overdose, seventy-five percent of them die at Lawrence General Hospital. So we really need to reconsider, um, when we think about these out-of-towners, they're dying at the hospital. Um, so they're not necessarily these people that we envision that are under the bridge or on the streets. They are also ninety-five percent of them employed, seventy-five percent of them are white. The average age is thirty-nine, seventy-five percent of them are male. So they are most likely being picked up after an overdose in their home or at some other location, transported to the hospital, Narcan is being used in the process, and they eventually die at the hospital. So all of this data is very important. It gives us a lot of, um, things to think about when we think about who is using, where they're using, the importance of having Narcan available. Um, and we also saw, uh, just last week, an article in the Lowell Sun, and Lowell's numbers of overdoses have decreased almost fifty percent. And in the article about that, um, the folks in Lowell, one of the reasons for that they attribute is the, and I'm gonna quote, "The police and fire department saturate Lowell with naloxone", which is the other name for Narcan. So it's very important that Narcan is available because it saves the life that will eventually allow the person to enter into recovery when they're ready to enter into recovery. So very important that we have all the Narcan available that we can in the community. Very important that the police have it, that all first responders have it, that everybody that interacts with community members who may need it, have it. You all should go to a pharmacy. It's available, standing orders. You just go in, show them your pers- your insurance card, or you can pay cash, not even involve your insurance, and have it on you if you're dealing with the public in Lawrence. Super important. It's part of, uh, the American Heart Association CPR to administer naloxone, Narcan. So if there are any questions?
Sure. So I just wanna make one comment and then a question. So I just want the members here, Council President, to know that we sent a letter to the fire chief asking what, what is their standard operating procedure once they come across somebody who, uh, is clearly, uh, overdosing from an opioid. Uh, apparently, uh, we have not received a response yet, but I think there's good reason. I think the, the chief has been out. Um, and so, uh, when, when he returns, I'm sure we'll get a, some sort of response. And when I do get that response, I will share it with, uh, with all the committee members. And that's just a comment because this is my understanding. This is for the police department, uh, and the fire department will not be using it. Uh, but I'll get some under- uh, a better understanding as to why that is and, and their processes. I'm sure there's a good reason for that. My question, the demographics. So it, I'm just reading this. If you are living in Lawrence, you're more likely, if you're gonna, if you're gonna die of an overdose, you're not gonna die in the hospital. If you are outside of the city and you come in, it's most likely that you're gonna die in the hospital. Can you explain that discrepancy? And when you say thirty in the community, what does that mean? Are they, you said on the bridge, are they, are they on this, in the house? Where are these people?
So, um, the data, as it, as our data collector presents it to me, gives the address of the death. So that means that person was already dead when the first responders arrived at the address. So it was either a home or a physical location in the community. What this means is for the non-Lorenzians that died at the hospital, they were not already dead when the first responders got to their home. So what we can extrapolate from that is that they either are using substances that aren't as deadly. So they're using pills, um, that are either of a more pure nature and aren't cut with, you know, they're not using, um, heroin that's cut with fentanyl and therefore more deadly. They're using prescription pills, which are a, um, pharmaceutically cleaner substance and less likely to cause an immediate overdose in that sense. So they are able to be transported to a hospital and survive in terms of an overdose. Um, there's also the consideration that somebody in Lawrence may be using socially with other people and there is Narcan available. A lot of groups do a really good job educating people around the need for Narcan. Great Lawrence Family Health Center is the distribution site and they do an amazing job. And there's a lot of other. And there's a lot of other agencies and groups that do an excellent job getting the word out about how important it is. And like the Lieutenant was saying earlier, people aren't looking to have Narcan when they're using. They do not want to have Narcan administered to them because it takes away their high. But people know the importance of having it just in case. So they're not carrying it to use on themselves. They're carrying it to use on somebody they care about, somebody that they don't want to overdose. So it's thinking about the, the demographics and the way people use in Lawrence and outside of Lawrence. And then just by nature, having the hospital here in Lawrence, people from other communities being transported here.
My last question, and you don't have the answer, so I'm going to ask if you wouldn't mind giving this to me later, which is, this is a great sheet. Thank you for putting this together. The one thing that I, I think that would be useful as well is the, since, since Narcan or naloxone is so prevalent now through our city, I'd like to know, these are, these are not success stories. These are people who did not get it in time, and, and they weren't able to be revived. Right? So what I'm interested in is, how many deaths? I mean, how many times have, have we, we, meaning the collective, we, General Hospital, first responders, et cetera, provided the Narcan successfully? So I like to get an idea, is this happening once a day? Is this happening five times a day? I have no idea what the universe is of the amount of overdosing that's going on in our city. And I think that would be really interesting to know how prevalent this is throughout our city. If you break it down, that's great, too. I'm not expecting a breakdown, although if you have, that'd be great to know. But I'm, if you could get that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I have contacts at Lawrence General and Great Lawrence Family Health Center who keep track of that information. But again, we don't know people in the community, individuals. But, you know, we can track it from a few data points, data sets. So I can get you what's available.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any further questions or comments?
Counselors, before we vote on this? Me personally, I, I appreciate the work that is being done today with Narcans. But at the same time, as I mentioned at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, I think that it is important that we also have preventive measures.
Yes.
I wouldn't want us to have to use Narcans in the city of Lawrence or anywhere, for, for that sake. But I think that we need to do more to prevent the use of, you know, the opioids in our city. We need to stop, we need to figure out a way, a cohesive plan that is more about stopping and preventing rather than, you know, simply making sure that someone stays alive. We need to be more aggressive at stopping it from where it is, and we need to seek help, not simply in grants to fund for the purchase of Narcans, but rather to prevent the, the drugs coming from outside of our city, because we're not making it here. We're getting it from outside. We need to get collaboration from the state level and federal level to ensure that it stops coming in the city of Lawrence. We need to stop selling. We need to go after the people that are doing that. Not necessarily simply the ones that are already in an overdose. No, let's go and stop it from whoever is selling it. We know who the big fishes are, so let's go after them. And that's, that's beyond what you can handle. I understand that. But the Police Department, I appreciate the work they're doing, but I think that more needs to be done to stop and prevent this from happening. I'm going to support it tonight, but I don't want to see Narcan be, you know, our getaway system to, to, you know, overdoses here. In order to prevent and stop overdoses, we need to have more.
We all have to remember, too, that Narcan is also going to save people who are unintentionally overdosing on painkillers they get after surgery, after having a tooth removed. It's absolutely possible for that to happen. And actually, the recommendation is that doctors, every time they prescribe a painkiller, that they prescribe Narcan as well. And that's something that our coalition is going to be working on to increase awareness with doctors, so that it becomes an automatic. If they give you a, a painkiller, they give you Narcan, that there's no questions asked. So we have to think about it more widely now, too.
Is there any other Counselor that has not spoken yet? Counsel Ortiz.
Thank you so much for putting this comprehensive information together. And I agree with the sentiments. I think that our community has the same desire as our Council President, that we don't have this to even be a thing. But the reality is that it is here. And I think that anytime we have a save, the ability to save a life, then we have given somebody a second, third, whatever chance to get it right for themselves and to be a continued member of society. I think also, some education that I received before the meeting that's important is that everyone around this table has participated in some point or another in a cleanup. And accidents do happen. And I, I'm going to be thankful, if ever the time when I am cleaning a park, that, and I actually get, accidentally get exposed to, to something that our first responders have Narcan in order to save my life, save our children's lives, who volunteer heavily in our city and are not as cautious as, as we are. I know that it's been in the news where first responders have gotten this unintentional exposure, or people are cleaning up and they get this unintentional exposure. And so I understand the, the ideal behind, well, if we give Narcan, then that's going to allow people to continue using. The ideology behind somebody that has an addiction problem does not come down to the policy of us passing $35,000. Their problem is, is deeper than anything that's discussed at this table. Our job is to aid in the work, the hands-on work that you guys do, and to be sure that we continue to see our fellow citizens or people around us as humans, and that we protect humanity in its purest form. And so I thank you for the work that you've done. And I am supporting this this evening and any other effort that the Police Department or your, your department or any other organization has to help our members of, of society that have addiction issues, because we're all touched by it in different ways. So thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Rodriguez.
Sure. Looking at, at the statistic you provide to us, thank you for doing that. I'm just wondering how, basically, do you know that, do you have that information on how, basically, most of the people start using heroin?
Start, yes. So the data tells us that four out of five heroin users start with prescription painkillers. And actually, there's, now, we have additional access to data around that because of the implementation of the Prescription Monitoring Plan. We can see doctors down to each county. So we can see in Essex County, how many prescriptions for opiates are written. And in the first quarter where it was recorded, it was hundreds of thousands of prescriptions. So when you see this, you see the immense opportunity for addiction that is available just in Essex County. And these are all legitimate prescriptions, written by legitimate doctors for legitimate reasons. But the way that they end up becoming an eventual heroin addiction is when they get in the wrong hands. When somebody doesn't use their whole prescription, they put it in their medicine cabinet, a child or a child's friend or a visitor to the home gets their hands on it, uses it, or abuses it. It's diverted from the person it's intended to, to another person, and it becomes now a substance of abuse that leads a person into addiction. And when that is no longer available, the person makes their way to heroin, which will eventually become fentanyl, if they're aware of it or not. So that's the process. Painkillers that are usually prescribed, and then an eventual progression to heroin or, and/or fentanyl.
Thank you.
So?
Thank you. One more question, Counsel Rodriguez.
Oh, I still have a bunch of questions.
One more question, Counsel Rodriguez.
No, it doesn't make sense to, to ask one question. If I have a serious question for her.
Ask.
I have a couple of questions, not just one. So on the statistic you have here, how many of those 65 individuals were homeless?
They all had residence listed. So it's hard to tell, based on the death certificate, if they were actually homeless or not. Because they had to have a residence listed, so presumably, they would have listed the last residence documented. That's not able to, that's not something we're able to track.
Because like, over here, it says 93% that were employed.
Right.
So 59 out of the 65 were employed.
Right. So I'm using that, the employed versus unemployed, as more of a sense of how many of them were homeless versus not homeless. Because we're not able to track whether or not they were really homeless, because they would list their last known address on the death certificate.
Essentially, what I'm seeing here, that we have a problem, an opio, an epidemic crisis, opioid, opioid crisis, that is being, four out of five times, created by the pharmaceutical industry. And we have a, a grant of $35,000 that we're accepting today to keep on contributing with the, with the problem. Somehow, one way or another, because they creating the problem, and now we're trying to solve the problem, but it's, it's, basically, we are into a hole and not, not a way out. We're just going deep and deep and deep.
I wouldn't say it's, it's contributing to the problem. I would think, just think to yourself, how many, you know, we're thinking in generalities here. How many 40-something-year-old white men do you know in general? Any one of them could die of an overdose, to your right. But that, but that's, that's the point of, that's the point of statistics, is that these are, these are people who work, who, they're not the people that we think they are, that need, unfortunately, the Narcan didn't work for these people. And as Counsel LaPlante pointed out, you know, I am going to get the data on, as much data as I can, on who we are using Narcan for, that it does work on. But these people needed it. Any one of us could need it, and we don't know. There's a lot of hiding and secrecy in addiction. And part of the responsibility of our first responders is to save lives. Even the lives of the people who are hiding their addictions and hiding their secrets, it's our responsibility to save lives.
No, no, no. I mean, I'm seeing an issue here. And, and accepting that $35,000, I'm, I'm just seeing like, part of the contribution of, of, of creating more issues.
But that money isn't available for anything else. That money is specifically for this use. So if it's not accepted for this use, it's not available for anything else. That money is specifically for Narcan.
One more question, Counsel President. Thank you.
Seeing there's no further questions or comments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Present.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Present.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel DePena.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Present.
Noted. Counsel Rabdo.
Yes.
Counsel Ortiz.
Yes.
Counsel Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez. Counsel LaPlante.
Yes.
And Counsel President.
Yes.
Seven in favor, one present, and one.
Next document is Document 197, 19517, Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Counsel President. Document, can I get a motion to accept a committee report from Document 19517?
So motion to accept a committee report has been made. It's our second, it's been properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
This document came out with no recommendation because we are waiting, and I don't know if Counsel LaPlante has the answer. Do you?
We're waiting for an opinion from Mr. Boddy, and that was received.
Okay.
I believe we all, I believe the committee received that, too.
And we also were waiting for another?
The Attorney General's office, but there's no control over, we don't have any control over the Attorney General's office. So I, I haven't heard anything from them.
The reason that I'm asking is because he was the author of this item, and he was present at the Ordinance Committee. So I remember receiving the city attorney, but we were waiting for the.
Attorney's General.
Attorney General. So.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to accept the committee report.
That we approved that.
That's approved.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to order a public hearing.
Oh, a public hearing.
Second.
The motion to order a public hearing has been made. It's been properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 24117, Madam Chair.
Document 24117 is a parking permit come out with, a canal street that come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as the formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made. It's been properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.
Next document is Document 24117, Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Is the loading son a mill street? Also come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as the formal motion.
Motion has been made.
Second.
It's been properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Counsel President.
Counsel Rodriguez.
I would like to go back to item 19517, if possible, to reconsider my vote.
19517?
Yes. There is a, a few things over here that we discussed at the Ordinance Committee that was not supposed to be in the language of this ordinance that we're actually waiting for publication.
There's a motion on the floor to reconsider.
We're in the middle of a motion on a document for a public hearing.
For 141?
241.
241?
Yeah, 241. You may want to clear that up first.
Yeah, so there's a motion 24117. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to reconsider, Counsel Rodriguez?
Motion to reconsider and discussion?
Motion to reconsider Document 19517, which is a permit requirement for individuals who solicit money on public waste has been made. Is there a second?
As a courtesy to Counsel Rodriguez, I'll second it.
Second.
Second, Counsel LaPlante. Counsel Rodriguez.
Counsel, and through you, Counsel President, when we were discussing this item on the Ordinance Committee, on the Section A of the, of the ordinance, we actually eliminate a few things here that now are in the language of this ordinance that we're publishing. So through you, Counsel President, I would like to ask the petitioner to clarify and probably delete the items that, that were not supposed to be there. You provide us a copy with things that, new things that it was discussed and approved, but we actually have the original one here in front of us, not the one that we modified.
Counsel LaPlante. Thank you very much. I think the District Counsel from Tower Hill makes a good point. During the committees, I recall, there were changes made. So I would expect that the changes that were made at the, at the Subcommittee is what's going to be published at the, at the, with this order, not the original language. So I agree with the Counselor from Tower Hill.
There were, Section A, we eliminate A, B, C, D, E, and F.
In Section A?
Uh huh.
A, B, C, D, E, F. A, B, C, D, E, F are eliminated.
Uh, and then we include another type of language on there to be, um, that it could be anybody, basically. And then on section, section D, uh, that was the, uh, the, the, the section that we have questions. And that's why we actually request a recommendation from the, uh, from the city attorney. And, uh, and the, and the attorney general as well. Because, um, at the, at that level, we, I believe that, when we were discussing the item on, at that level, the ordinance committee, I believe that we were violating people's, um, civil rights on section D. And that's why we actually, um, wait to get a recommendation from the attorney general to make sure Lawrence is not liable in terms of, uh, people's right. And probably to get an ordinance that work for the city. Uh, we also include the way that we were gonna, uh, that we were gonna ask the people to request a permit, that is not here either. And that's from the top of my head that I'm talking, but I, I, that is, there was a, a sun update, that we're not here right now.
Do you have it?
So, I guess, uh, we're gonna have to re, uh, review probably the minutes, and probably the, um, the video of that day, and create a publication that allow us to, um, have what the committee discussed, and now what we have in front of us.
So, um, Counsel Rodriguez, will you? If, if you will bear with us, um, our confidential secretary went inside the office to see if she has the updated language inside. But if not, what we could do is order the public hearing pending the, the updated language by, by the city attorney, with the amendments made at the ordinance committee.
And by the way, through you, we do have a copy that the, the city attorney, immediately after the ordinance committee meeting, sent a copy of newly, newly written proposed ordinance with the changes. I think she has a hard copy, an electronic copy of it. So that we do have that. And the city attorney's opinion is already in our package. If you looked, it's already in there. So, but I understand where the, where the, I want, I want, I would like for the, um, the counselor to be comfortable with this, so there's nothing going on. But I do think that the, that the city attorney provided all that, that the request is being made, and so, I just think it's a matter of giving that to that, to the Tower Hill counselor at this point. And I think your, a point about still moving forward with it is, is a, a good point in providing, and, and that's gonna, it's gonna be reflected in the, in the order that's gonna be published, it's gonna be the new language, not the original language.
Um, we don't, through you, Counsel President, we don't have the, the recommendation from the city attorney as part of the record?
We do.
We do at the end? Okay, let me see.
August twenty-fifth, through you, Mr. President, August twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen.
He provided with a book?
We have, we have both versions in our document.
So, basically?
So, so the, the concern brought up by Counsel Rodriguez is valid, in the sense that we have both documents listed. One is on page one oh three, if we have the iPad. One is on page one oh three out of two, no, I'm sorry. One oh four out of two forty-five.
One oh four?
Yeah, one oh four, that's the one that you're referring to, specifically. So, one oh four out of two forty-five.
The one, one oh four? Is the one that we modified?
That, the one that, that was modified, that's the one we don't want.
We don't want.
The one that?
And the one that we want?
Is on page, um.
Where?
One oh one.
One oh one?
Yeah, there's, um, the memo, uh, that was submitted by our confidential secretary, uh, includes the ordinance. Teresa, did you get an updated version of the, the language of the, okay. So, all we have is the memo from the, from the, um, city attorney?
Mm-hmm, that's what I'm saying.
But the, the city attorney is aware of the changes that?
And on the, on that, um, on the, on the language that it was provided to, to us at the city can, at the, uh, the ordinance committee, we also have the, do you have it? No? Um, we also have that this, the, the, uh, the board that is gonna approve those permits was gonna be the city council. So, that means that the process for somebody to get a permit, it's gonna take probably a, a, between twenty-one days to a month to get a permit. And go through the, through the, through the process of getting signatures, probably, and all the stuff. I don't think that should be the proper way, to be honest with you, Counsel President. Because if we want to do it right, we should change that on the, on the reg, on the, on the language that we're gonna publish. And have it as the, as part of the original. That, that the people that wanted to ask for permission, they can ask of the city clerk or another department, but not necessarily coming here and go through a twenty-one days process to get a, to get a permit. That's something that is on the, uh, language that is going to be published. That's why I wanted to discuss it at this level with everybody.
Me personally, I will have a difference of opinion there, because we're currently asking our transfer vendor license, uh, to do that, go through that process. If we're scrutinizing people that are doing business for the city, I think we should also go make folks that are requesting, uh, money or panhandling to go to the city.
It is a different, it is a different.
It's very different, but why, why go make it simple, simple for you to beg and hard for you to work? I think it should be the other way around. We should make it simple for you to work and hard for you to beg.
And, and we're setting up the city to be sued. That's what we're doing today.
No, we're just setting up a process, I think.
We're setting up a process that is gonna have the city into a litigation issues eventually, because we are violating people's right. Panhandlers is completely different than, um, than any other type of job. And, and every, it's been estimated, it's been, it's been, uh, work in other cities and town. Other cities and towns have been, um, in favor of something like this, which I am, trust me. I am in favor of this. But, we gotta do it right if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it here in Lawrence. We gotta learn from, from mistakes from other communities.
I completely agree with you, Counselor LaPlante.
I just want to say, this is a debate that would be going really good after the public hearing, if, if individuals have concerns, which I'm hearing about the ordinance, every individual around this table has the ability to either try to amend it or to vote against it, or vote for it. But I think we should go forward with the amended language that was provided. And I, I do thank the counselor for bringing that. And want to make sure that we get the right language out there that deals with the things that he addressed. And I'll make sure, I have the electronic copy that, that it was finished from the ordinance committee, and make sure I'm, I'm not able to pull, pull, unfortunately, pull it up this evening. But I do have that, and I'll be happy to provide it to the clerk. But this is a discussion we should have after the public hearing, and then we can debate it, uh, whether or not it's constitutional, unconstitutional. Is it difficult? Is it hard? Is it the right speed? Is it not the right speed? These are things that we can debate after the public hearing.
And so, the motion on the floor is?
To reconsider.
We have no motion at this point. The motion that we have is to actually reconsider the vote by Counsel Rodriguez.
So, I'm reconsidering my vote, uh, and bring the item to discussion again.
So, the motion?
You can move the question now.
So, the motion against, so everyone is clear, is for a reconsideration. So, if you didn't agree with what you voted earlier, you change your vote. If you agree with what you voted earlier, you keep the same vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Roll call?
Present.
Mr. Clerk?
Counsel Vice President?
Yes.
This is a motion to reconsider.
Oh, oh.
Motion to reconsider.
Yeah, that's a motion to reconsider. Yeah. How are you voting?
Uh, I'm sorry. That was awfully fast, and I'm gonna.
Yeah, they cast it.
Reconsider the reconsider.
So, if you, again, let's go, let's go one step backward.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor that was made by Counselor Giovanni Rodriguez to reconsider the vote.
Right, and we, the question was called, and we answered.
Yes.
So, we can't change that.
No, we, some, we're gonna do a roll call.
As a courtesy of the counselor who wants to vote present, I will say yes. I will let him have that opportunity, yes. Vote to reconsider, so I give him a chance. I'm not changing my vote at the other side, but I'll give you the chance.
Counsel Maldonado?
No.
Counsel Ortiz?
Yes.
Counsel Abdou?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel DePena?
Yes.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
And Counsel President?
Yes.
I make a motion to order a public hearing.
Second.
Motion to order a public hearing has been made, it's been properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Order a public hearing.
Order a public hearing.
Order a public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Well, on the, on, I'm assuming that that motion was with the, with the proper language, pending, pending the language that was supposed to.
Pending the proper language.
Is that correct? That's how it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on, we have document two seventy-seven seventeen, Madam Chair. But that was actually a, a very good, healthy discussion, so props to you, Counsel Rodriguez. Thank you for, for, uh, bringing it up.
Thank you.
That was, that was a good legislative, uh, process for us here at the city council. We haven't had that discussion in a while.
Document two seventy-seven is Walnus Street, one way from Irving Ave to Park Street North, it come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly second, any discussion?
To order a public hearing?
Yeah, to order, to order.
Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Next document is document two eighty-four seventeen. Madam Chair, from the ordinance.
Lawrence Police Department requests to create two new positions with the police department, come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion. We need to order a public hearing, that? To create a new position, that we need to order a public hearing.
We, there's one position that we need to be, that, that we want ordinance, is one. Based on my understanding, there's one.
It's one, yeah, we compare it in one. It used to be two. He requests two, but it's actually one.
That, yes, there's an, uh, for members in the ordinance committee, if you remember.
Yes.
There's one position, which is the Director of Community Liaison, that we, that has been suggested that we ordinance. The second position, which is a, which is a senior clerk, will not be. So.
Is, is one.
Yes. So, there's a motion on the floor to order a public hearing to create the position of Director of Community Liaison in the police department, with the Lawrence Police Department. Yeah, to order a public hearing.
To order a public hearing.
Order a public hearing. For the Director of Community Liaison.
Yeah, because how are you gonna?
The senior clerk position should not have come before the city council originally.
No, is, is one.
Yeah, should not, it should have not come before the city council. Um, so the, the intent originally, I don't know if, uh, our chief of staff has a different, is that what the intent is from the administration? The senior clerk should have never been before the city council.
Yes. The new administrative position needs to be ordnanced, and the clerk for that position is just a senior clerk.
A clerical position. That would be an union position, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah.
So, as a result, we don't need to take action on?
Just Director of Community Liaison, um, do you have a draft, if any, chance?
I believe that was submitted to the, um.
Yeah, we have a draft in the, in, in ours.
I can get it to you first thing. I don't have it tonight, but I can get it, but it was submitted to the subcommittee. Uh, we'll get it to you, absolutely.
Thank you.
We did, um, I, I was at the ordinance committee at that, uh, during that discussion, and there was something that was brought up in terms of the, um, qualifications of the Director of Community Liaison for the new position. The original request is to have a master's degree in public administration, social work, or any related fields, and a minimum of three years of work experience. We did discuss that we wish for this position to also include a bachelor's degree and five years of experience. I don't know if?
No, we didn't say five year, we just did the master.
A, say, master's degree and/or a bachelor's degree and five years of experience? Counselor Maldonado, that was your request.
That was, okay.
That was the request, that the master be removed and the, a bachelor with the five-year experience.
Yeah.
So, this, this doesn't reflect, this, uh, modification doesn't reflect what we approved.
So, in the report, in, yeah, in the report that we received, it does reflect, um, so the report reads as follows, request to create the, the position, right? Either a master's degree or a bachelor's of art or a bachelor's of science with five years' experience. That was what we discussed at the ordinance committee.
As a committee, we check, but we change, we will remove the master.
No, we said to have either, either/or. So, if the person has a master, doesn't need the years of experience. If the person doesn't have a masters and has a bachelor's, the person will need the years of experience.
Yes, yes, we remember, yep.
So, this job, this job description?
Yeah.
Doesn't meet, this job description is not?
No, no.
No.
Um, remember that when, what we are ordering here is to create the position. When the position is posted, the job description will include?
Is coming.
In that. We're just trying to ordinance the position, not a job description. The job description can change, um, after the position is even in, in the books.
Okay.
So, is there a motion on the floor to order a public hearing? Can I get a?
Motion to order a public hearing.
And I second.
Okay, motion has been made, and it's been properly second. Any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document two eighty-five seventeen. Madam Chair, from the ordinance committee.
Motion to accept a committee report on document two eighty-five.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly second. Any discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Discussion, Counselor Maldonado.
We are going to order a public hearing. I think it is essential that we notified all those people that are being affected, and that we don't miss, uh, like we did at the, at the subcommittee, that we didn't notify those people. So, it is important that we notified each one of them that are being affected by this request to change.
Is that a motion?
The motion is to accept a committee report, and then, um, I think for the counselor, they were in present, I think they need to know this is a very conflict and controversial, um, items. So, I think it, um, yes, you're right. We need to send correspondence to both, um, parties, not only to one. Everybody needs to be present, and that's what we promised in what we request from ordinance committee.
There's a motion on the floor to approve a committee report.
Just, just one more. I, I think it, I know that we are not, we're not gonna discuss it up here, but I think it is important that the members of the council understand that the request by the homeowner on Jackson Street to get four parking spaces out of a total of eight is so unreasonable and selfish, and I want to make sure that we understand that.[1734.62] By the time, so we understand that, that by the time we come to the public hearing, we want to make sure that we understand that. That it's totally selfish on the part of the people on Jackson Street to request four of the available eight parking spaces for one single house when there are six other houses on that street that will only get four.
All those in favor to accept the committee report?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counsel, this is a motion to.
Motion to.
To order a public hearing to, to delete.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing.
Second, and can we include in the motion to send correspondence to everybody on, on.
Jackson and, and.
Jackson and, Jackson Street and Park Street.
Berkeley Street.
Between Berkeley and, and Jackson.
So the, the motion on the floor is to order a public hearing and also send correspondence to the butters of Jackson.
And Park.
And Park, between Jackson and Berkeley.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on with the agenda, withdrawals, Document 189-17, resident parking at Eight Park Street. Can I please get a motion to withdraw?
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 232-17, Railroad Street, one way from Haver Street to Main Street. Can I please get a motion to withdraw?
Motion to withdraw.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Counselors, are there any table matters that you wish to take off the table at this point? Seeing there's none, moving on to new business. Document 301-17, Lawrence Historical Commission, request that the North Common National Historical District be properly referred to as the Common. Is going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document 302-17, Salon. MII. Request for parking spaces for business access near 434 Prosper Street is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document 303-17, Everest Street, safety concerns, going to the Ordinance Committee. Document 304-17, one way, Sunset Avenue from Saratoga Street to Lawrence Street, direction to be determined, Ordinance Committee. Document 305-17, Unique Hope and Dreams, request to use a campaign uncommon walk for homelessness. On October 7th, 2017, rain date, October 14th, Ordinance Committee. Document 306-17, handicap parking, 12th Park Street, Gloria Candeladro, Ordinance Committee. Document 308-17, Lawrence Historical Commission, request to recognize authority of the commission to name or rename sites within its jurisdiction, going to the Ordinance Committee. Document 309-17, Office of Planning and Development, request for authorization to receive and approve mini grant expenditures from the National Center of Healthy Housing. And the amount of $5,000 going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 30, 310-17, One Gigscape Shop, request permission to use a campaign uncommon for a big block jam on October 22nd, 2017, rain date, October 29th, going to the Ordinance Committee. Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Budget and Finance.
Okay, so we are, um, so.
I'm ready to go.
The 14th? Is that Thursday, the 14th?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair from Budget and Finance.
13th, 7 o'clock.
Uh, Mr. Chair from Housing.
Uh, Monday, September 11th, at 7:00 P.M.
Monday, the 11th?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair from Personnel.
Mr. President, we have no items at this time.
Okay. Counselors, can I please get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Chance we made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.